Just waiting for Jane.
Yes, she is.
Sorry I'm late.
Thank you Jane. Good evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tustin for June the 9th, 2020. Call the meeting to order and as you join me in the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice. Just three announcements. Hydrant flushing will be June 16th and 17th. Litter pluck and the garden swap will be this Saturday, June the 13th. And our census is still operating and those that haven't filled it out, please do. And if you know somebody that hasn't, please encourage them to do so. We are still lagging behind the other towns as far as our census response. We've got two correspondents. The first correspondence is from Star Hesse. May 29th, 2020 to Ben Johnson, the town supervisor referenced the status of the town code compliance investigation request of January 3rd. On January 3rd, a request was made that the town investigate the failure of a number of town employees to enforce and uphold various codes and standards in the development of a commercial multi-unit building located on Town Lot SLB 5-1-9.12. Over the ensuing five months, repeated requests for status information and your efforts, you gave multiple verbal assurances that you were pushing, pursuing investigation of these matters with, among others, the town zoning board, town planning board, town building department, individuals that might have been involved with code enforcement duties, officials with the New York State Department of State, the new town attorneys. As late as the monthly town workshop meeting on May 5th, you addressed criteria for investigation of a code enforcement officer's work, including that any follow-up review of such work would need to be done by a certified code enforcement officer from outside the town's employ. On May 12th, just a few hours before the regular town meeting, I received your letter citing provisions of section 268 to justify shifting the burden of conducting the requested investigation from the town back to the aggrieved property owner. As quoted from your May 12th letter, section 268 clearly states upon failure refusal, emphasis added of the proper local officer or board or body of the town to any such action or proceeding for a period of 10 days after written request by a resident taxpayer of the town, so to proceed. Any three taxpayers may take further action. The salient point here is the town never said it was refusing to act. On the contrary, up to the issuance of the May 12th letter, there were repeated verbal assurances from you, the town supervisor, that investigation of the matter was being pursued. There is no reason to presume that your assurances were not genuine and made in good faith as to the question of whether there were and or continue to be violations of codes and policies in connection with this property and project. That matters what we believe the town's investigation would determine. Your letter of May 12th finally made clear that the town has no intention of pursuing any investigation of these matters. A phrase from Dylan's song about wasting time comes to mind. Don't think twice. It's all right. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Star Hesse. The second letter is one that was just received today. It is from Janet Bergen, addressed to myself and the town board. We would like to make a contribution to the town of Tustin to help with the cost incurred from both cleaning up debris and removing a sign chain to the bridge last week. Enclosed, please find 175 hours collected from people who were at the Narisburg Bridge nonviolent protests on June 1st and 2nd. Thank you very much, Janet. Those are the only two correspondence that I have. Payment of bills. Our May 2020 report. General expended $99,778.17. Highway expended $43,554.98. Water $31,853.57. Sewer $17,134.51. And lighting district $869.47 for a total of $193,190.70. Jill, you had an opportunity to go through the bills? She's unmuted.
Muted.
All good. Yes, I did review the bills and everything is good.
For those that normally see our bills, the general bill is up because we did make the first payment on the horse. And other discrepancies, I would accept a motion to have paid the bills as presented.
I'll move.
Jill makes a motion to have paid the bills as presented. Brucey?
I'll second.
Jane, second.
Hi.
Jane?
Yes.
Jill?
Jane, yes.
Brandy?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm an eye.
And question about that anyway. Am I correct that the generator bill is still not in?
Correct.
Okay.
Division reports. Town of Tustin highway report for May 2020. They used 489 gallons of diesel fuel, 384 was for highway, 105 was non-highway. They used 200 gallons of gas, 31 was for highway and 169 was non-highway. They patched holes on dirt and paved roads. They stockpiled stone for the summer use. They mowed the right of ways along roads. They cut trees in the Beaverbrook area and around town. They installed the dog signs around town. They stockpiled sand for next winter. They prepared roads for paving this summer and they replaced pipes on the Gable Road. The water and sewer report for May of 2020, they continued cleaning and organizing the warehouse. They continued removing all sand from sand bed number two. They brought in new sand and finished adding a new layer of filter sand. They started removing stones from around the distribution boxes and sand bed number two for washing. They built a washing box for rocks. They installed one new water meter. They reinstalled meters at one house. They brought barrels of caustic soda for one well. Well, number one to the sewer plant installed twice this month. They cleaned and organized the tractor shed. They pumped six septic tanks. They dug up septic tank on Oak Street to figure out homeowner septic problems and found the effluent cleanout broken, which allowed dirt and water into the pipe. They fixed and they had the septic tank pumped out. They started removing sludge from sand bed number one. They did one final meter reading for a house that sold. Cobra lane cleaned and pumped the dousing tanks at the sewer plant. They unloaded four barrels of caustic soda from a slack chemical delivery at well number one. They picked up the zero turn mower and weed whackers to use for mowing the wells to free up the tractor for work at the sewer plant. They responded to two after hour alarms at the Kirkborough pump station. They manually pumped down the tank and reset the panel. They cleaned and organized the shop and put in new shelves due to the running out of space for parts and tools. They mowed the sewer plant and the wells. They exercised their generators. They removed rust and painted curb valve caps. They scheduled online training for Mueller hydrants on June 30th. The recap on a hydrant project estimate cost was $42,000. The actual cost was $26,600 by the saving of $15,400 on the original cost estimate. Again, they remind us the hydrant flushing is June 16th and 17th from 6 o'clock in the morning until 12 noon. Building inspectors report for May of 2020, they did 25 construction inspections. They did one fire and safety inspection, two certificates of occupancy, nine certificates of compliance. Issued 13 building permits, two accessory building garage, one chimney and fuel, four for deck, two electrical, one roof replacement, two septic permits, one floodplain permit. C of O and violation searches were eight. Previous violations closed and corrected was one. Money's collected. The office may want to make 31, $2,058.80. The building inspector and clerk attended the webinar in 2020, advanced in-service part one on May 7th and attended a webinar on 2020 residential energy code overview and electric energy storage systems for residential occupancies on May 20th. The assessors report for May 2020 during the month of May, the tentative role was posted both in written and online form. In May, the assessor sits with a tentative role four times for four hours each. This was done by phone and was very slow. Calls were none to minimal. Correspondence with a couple of taxpayers over assessed values were done by multiple emails. One resulted in an agreement between the assessor and taxpayer and a stipulation was presented to the grievance board. The other resulted in grievance being presented in front of the board. There are two grievances presented by a tax reduction service requesting the market value and the assessment will be reduced to $1,000. A mock type appraisal was done by computer and also by the same tax service and presented as evidence. This, in my opinion, is a conflict of interest in any reduction achieved by the appraisal ultimately will benefit the appraiser and representative. I've been successful during small claims court and getting some other cases thrown out that were presented by other companies that had a relationship between the appraiser and the representative. I'll have to rework these appraisals to show that the assessment is justified. I tried to emphasize to the grievance board that the appraisals presented have underlying factors and need careful consideration. The pretty pictures do not often tell an accurate story. The board was able to hear the cases and stipulations easily within about an hour and a half, so the four hours provided to be adequate for our cases. Number was about on par with previous several years and was generally well handled on Zoom. Our thanks to Coach Weston for pulling up each grievance as we reviewed them. Interestingly, there was a grievance from Homeland's Farms for Delaware Solar. The assessment was equalized from the construction cost stated on their exemption form in a portion to the two parcels. Now Delaware Solar is requesting the use of an assert evaluation for assessment purposes. During our preliminary solar stages, it was determined that my assertive values were definitely not good for taxing purposes and that the emphasis was clearly on profit for the investors. I asked around and found our assessment was in line with other systems and a general consensus that assert was unusable for assessment purposes. Delaware Solar placed two similar cases in the town of Delaware and the last I heard they two were under recommendation to be denied. I recommended denial to our board. The adjudication has not been completed at this time, so I am waiting to see the grievance results. The processing has been at a minimum since April as a government center has been closed to foot traffic and many transactions are sitting on hold. Sue from the Upper Delaware Council.
I don't think she's here anymore.
Yeah, I will. If she is not, I will move to Brandy with the energy.
Okay. Um, so the energy committee met with Don Niger up at the Highway Barn on the first of June. Scott and Jen Porter were there. I was there. Sean Harrington, Michael Smith and Jan, Jan Allen from Seattle were online so that they could talk us through any kind of technical questions. They're the ones who fabricate the bill, the horse itself. Don suggested two locations he thought would work for the horse. That's up at the Highway Barn property. The first place was next to the solar array. The positives were level ground next to another sustainable custom project near a hose for cleanup maintenance. The second was near the parking. In the parking lot, kind of off to the side with the school buses parked. Positives were it was near an electrical box on one of the buildings that we own. We could connect to that. It's out of the way of traffic and it was a level ground as well. The horse unit is eight feet by 23 feet. The pad would be 14 feet by 26 feet that it would be upon. Requires a basic envelope around the horse. A structure, but minimal structure with some insulation so that the winter is not affecting it adversely. Would have one sliding door and one metal door, no windows. It's not very complicated. Then Scott talked to Ben Johnson and Jim Crowley to understand if we needed to put the the electrical work and all this other work out to bid and we're in the process of that at the moment. Scott also talked to Billy DeFilippo owns a solar array and just to see if we could connect the two projects, but we can legally, we're not, oh, we can't connect those two things. Okay. So we'll look into it. Then on June 4th, Scott met with Don Niger and Jim Crowley and Ben Johnson at the Town Highway Barn. Jim advised the town that the horse shouldn't be located near the solar array for a number of reasons. Therefore, the location has been decided upon the Highway Barn parking lot near the old barn where the school buses are. Um, Scott talked, let's see. Okay. Then on June 5th, we met again. We had a really busy week. At that meeting, this is the energy committee meeting. Jen Porter led the meeting. Scott was there. I was there. Corianne Manzell from Massachusetts was there and Star was there on, on the call. Anyway, up the updates to the timeline, the secret has been completed. Half of the cost, cost of the horse unit has been sent to the makers with the town check. A copy of that check and delivery receipt was sent to the DEC for full reimbursement within 30 days. So though our budget went up this month, that will come back to us for the next one. The horse is now being built for mid-September delivery. Um, the operations, which is Scott's department, he reported on his meeting with Ben and with Jim and Don about the location. And so then talked to Jim and Jim recommends to put the bid out for this work that needs to be done as a single contractor doing all the subcontracting within that job, which makes sense. So let's see. And then business and food out donation outreach, that's Corey's specialty in Massachusetts. She's going to be training participating restaurants and food merchants in late July or August. And she can either train them remotely or in person. She'll estimate how many buckets we should supply each business based on her calculating how much trash they produce. And the buckets will be donated for free to the TEC because Scott made a connection with the Boarshead people and they're going to give them, give us buckets with handles, lids and it's a UV food grade thickness, which is great. So that's a good plus saver. The farmer's market, Jen, Brendan Wyden and I met at the union and he secured us a free spot in front of their victory garden to set up a tent that'll be informational tent probably in August where people in the public can come up and ask the questions, give them flyers that we've been designing and understand what this is for. So that's a really good spot. It's kind of near the sidewalk in front of that garden. And then market development with the probiotic plant food. We've decided to, we agreed that we should be putting this information up on social media and on the town website when it comes time about, you know, about food waste educating the public and then there's two other things. It was a soft plastic is a collection. I'm almost at two tons. So that's exciting. Thanks everybody for bringing me plastic to my house and all the drop off points. I appreciate that. And we're still on hold with Weiss because they don't want anyone handling the soft plastic during the pandemic. I do it with gloves and a mask and everything. So, um, but we've been, I've been storing it in the warehouse that Ben allowed me to store. It's a town warehouse. It will organize even though the building is far from clean, but everything's kind of orderly. And, and the last thing was this LED streetlights. Ben signed the contract to kind of move that to the next and last phase. And they'll be installing the LED streetlights. Of course, if the pandemic is putting everything behind schedule, but we're still on course and Ben says that we are in queue for having installation as soon as possible in Sullivan County. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Um, we've got nothing at this time for the zoning rewrite committee.
That worries me, Ben. We have UDC grant out there for zoning rewrite. And that grant is due in the end, at the end of August. And we should be finished with this whole thing by then. So I don't know if you want to contact Kathy or.
Yeah, I actually I saw Kathy the other day and she said she was going to be at this meeting, so I'm surprised she's not.
Yeah, alls I'm saying is I just don't have a report to present. Not that they're not doing anything. I just don't have a report from them.
Okay.
Which leads me to Jane and Grant's.
Okay, a couple of things. Another UDC grant is the comprehensive plan grant. The committee met twice since the last town board meeting. We accomplished reviewing all the implementation schedule from the 2007 comp plan and understood that and looked at that as for relevance for the current comp plan. Then we met last night and Peter Manning, our consultant did a draft of the historical portion, the cultural portion and the recreational resource portion. And the committee interjected comments with regards to those three areas. Today, Peter Manning came to town and I happily took him around our town for five hours. We went all around Tustin up and down and one of the funny comments he made, he said, well, it looks like it's the Howlett and the Boy Scout camp. And I said, no, not really. But anyway, he was very impressed with what he saw, took a lot of pictures and they'll appear in the comp plan. The other thing, the bridge continues. I think I mentioned, I don't know which meeting, but I think it should be in the minutes, Crystal, that we did receive something from the, I don't know if it was the DOT or engineering company that said that the projection is that the cost is likely to go above the $900 plus thousand, about $48,000 above. So that is what is expected at this time. I think it should go in the minutes.
Yes, Jane, it's in the minutes from the last meeting.
I'm sorry?
Yes, it is in the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you. The other thing is I saw Dave Buns on in the crowd. Dave, I heard from Candace. I forwarded you a note, her message, and I just wondered if you have or anybody has given the information or provided the information that they requested as in Delaware Engineering. Can we hear from Dave, Crystal?
Hi, yeah. We spoke to Delaware Engineering and we're finalizing the information they're looking for and sending it up to them. With regards to your email with CAGNIS, with the emergency response plan, it just needs to be updated. We don't need to rewrite it. You just need to update the information that's in it.
Okay, so then you have been in contact with Delaware Engineering. This, um, everybody is for the preliminary engineering report for water, just water only. Which by the way, Dave and crew are doing a great job of getting a lot of the work done, but there's still more that has to be done. Anyway, since you're in contact, I'm going to call Dave Olman and kind of say, where are we with that? We need to have that in the hand so that we're prepared for the next grant round. Okay, Dave Buns?
Sure.
Okay. All right. I think that, can you think, oh, and then you have the roof grant information, Ben.
Yeah, I do. We've got that on whole business for, you know, bring up the the bid regarding the town at that point.
Okay. Okay.
Um, open the floor to public comment. I know, I'm sorry. Ted Kraus.
Hello?
You're there, Ed.
Oh, okay. Well, there's just a couple of things. The four wheelers, unlicensed, unregistered. You know, tearing around the ball field, the playground. As I told you, Ben, one night there was a family over there. The lady was sleeping on a blanket and they come tearing through there, through the mulch playground. They weren't that close. They were close, too close. And she woke up. So you know, I know you put that fence in there now, but that's not where she was. She was up by, you know, by the swings in that area. So anyway, that's a problem. They're still tearing around. And the last, the last I looked, I didn't see any porta john down here. And there's a lot of people at the playground every day. As a matter of fact, we had request, three, three requests on Sunday to use our facilities, our bathroom. So I mentioned it.
And I think I'll have an answer for most of those for you as we go along. At least, at least I hope I do.
Good.
Star?
I have a question.
Star is muted.
Hello?
Hi.
Go ahead, Star.
I just have a comment about the public comment forum. It says in here that public comments should pertain to agenda items only. And the comment I'd like to make is if that's the case for both the public comments for the meeting, then the person who controls what goes on the agenda basically controls what is going to be able to be asked in public comment or spoken in public comment. And I feel that this is just a gag device to keep the items that are being commented on to what is approved by who's ever making the agenda. And I really object to that. I don't think that's the, the meaning of.
Okay, if you, she's got it up here, but if you will look at the, the first public comment, the first public comment said 10 minutes will be given for public comment. Please keep the comments directed to the board. Comments should retain items only. The next public comment before closing items says the same thing, but it didn't, it doesn't normally say that. It's supposed to be open comment regarding anything. So, and as you can tell, we've always taken comment or at least while I've been here, we'll take comment on anything.
Okay.
Yeah, that is what it said and we'll make sure we take that out of the second one.
Okay, because we recently had quite an issue with things that were written one way and then weren't done. So I'd like to have that clarified in writing.
That's not a problem at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Iris?
I wanted to know whether or not there will be more signs that will be placed up so that one, as far as we talked about dog walking on leashes and also there is an enormous of poop down here in the flats because people are coming in, walking their dogs and have no respect for the properties down here. The dogs poo it up and they're, come down and see it and you will find poop everywhere. So we need to have some signage or something about, please pick up after your dog. Otherwise, you're not welcome here. I don't know what you want to say, but something has to be done because. because there is a lot of it everywhere down here in the flats. And we also, no one got any, that I know of, anything about, in their mailboxes or at their doors about dogs being on leash. And so I was wondering where that's at.
And we did get the signs up. We didn't put a ton of them up. We put.
There's only two.
Three. Yeah, there's three for the flats. The rest went down towards the 10 mile. There's a couple, a couple three down there that we put up.
And Veterans Park is one there.
In the Veterans Park.
It says, it's about the leash and picking up after the dog, both of those, and do not litter. So we hit all three. Don put up the polls. I don't know that he put the signs, or the rest of the signs up.
I believe that he, yeah, it was in his report that he did. As far as the mailer, that has not gone out yet, so we can, we can work on that.
So if, in fact, all the signs that I'm hearing have been put up, then we are talking about a problem down in the flats with an enormous amount of poop. And the only sign that we have seen, or that I have seen, or Mary has seen, is a sign by the park. And Town Hall.
Okay, so he, I'll check to see if he put the one on just after the laundry, right by the old medical building is. There's supposed to be one coming down there, so people coming into the area see that one.
I hope that takes care of it because it really is.
Yeah, I, you know, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know, Iris, if it is going to take care of it because some people are just disrespectful to where they're at, you know, almost to the point. Maybe we need Nico down there a day or two just to maybe do a little informative enforcement.
That would be great because there are a lot of people who are not residents who come in with their dogs, walk their dogs. Last weekend, it was like Dog Haven. And there is a disrespect for people's property. And if we're inviting people in,
I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion. Ben, do we know where the Airbnbs are, the owners?
No, not, I mean, we know who some of them are, but no, we've got no registration for them.
I'm just thinking, though, maybe the town should write something up about to give to Airbnb owners so that, you know, when you go to these places, there's always a book that has all the rules and regulations. And we could just say, welcome to our town, and these are the, you know, the things that we hope you abide by, blah, blah, blah. But so that everybody that comes to town on an Airbnb, to an Airbnb, will have something in writing, and then there's no question.
You know, I can, I can take that on, because I can find the owners and through Airbnb and get, put something together and put on each of their sites and then, you know, as a.
Make it very welcoming, but at the same time, give them the rules.
Yeah, yep, I can take that on.
Thanks, Jill.
Yep.
Jen?
Hi, everybody. Thank you. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what the conversation is right now about the flats. And Airbnbs, yes, I think it is something we need to have in the Airbnbs, but there's a lot of people just coming in on a day-to-day basis from around the region to use, to use the walking trail and to enjoy the area down here with dogs. I just, I don't know what we, what you would suggest if we see people that are in violation. Like, it feels very uncomfortable to me to call the state troopers because I feel like they have, you know, bigger things to deal with. But there definitely is a lot of activity down here, and people are not necessarily following the guidelines. And I do really hope that that flyer does go out to the residents because a big part of the problem here are the people that live here actually full-time that have dogs that are, haven't been leashed. I think it has improved a little since this conversation has started. But there's still, you know, dogs that are living here full-time that are allowed to be outside, not fenced in, not on a leash. There's also dogs that are not very secure in their homes. So if their, their owner opens the door, you know, the dog comes out. So I think that flyer to the residents is extremely important. And it's about leashing and it's about securing them. So we just recently fenced in a portion of our backyard so that, because we have a dog that has run off and has, you know, if she hears something, she doesn't like Don who lives across the way from us, so she'll, you know, she's chased after him. So we've rectified that situation by putting a fence in the backyard. So God forbid we open the door. If the dog gets out, you know, the dog can't get very far except the other side of our yard. So, you know, I just do think there's a lot of activity down here and we really need to tune into it. And I think we need, again, a method to what we do should something happen. Like, if somebody is in violation, what do we do?
Well, we'll get working with the mailer, also talk to Nico. Maybe he needs to be down there one weekend just doing some information. A little bit of contact from somebody from the town. Anybody else for a public comment? I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to move into old business. We're going to set the public hearing reference parking law for July 14, 2020. Doing a bunch of other items that we had on the agenda from last time. Public hearing that we were supposed to have tonight did not get taken care of, so we're going to move that into July. And I'm going to reread the resolution. I believe, Danielle, I should probably reread that if we're going to do it.
Yes.
You can say that. Town of Tustin Resolution Introducing a Local Law and Providing for Public Notice and Hearing. Be resolved in an introductory local law titled the Local Law to amend Chapter 255 prohibiting parking on Bridge Street being hereby introduced before the Town Board of the Town of Tustin, County of Sullivan, State of New York. It is further resolved that the proposed local law is a type-two action under secret and can be considered without further review. It is further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law will be laid upon the desk of each town board member. It is further resolved that the proposed local law is hereby referred to the Sullivan County Division of Planning, Community Development, and Real Property for review pursuant to General Municipal Law 239. It is further resolved that the Town Board shall hold a public hearing on said proposed law at the Tustin Community Hall, 210 Bridge Street, Naresburg, New York, at 16:15 PM on July 14, 2020. It is further resolved that the Town Court shall publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the Town of Tustin, not later than 10 days prior thereto. Before I go into motion, Danielle, do I need to add anything to Zoom if we're still on a Zoom meeting for that?
The notice that's published, and I gave a draft notice, should contain the Zoom information. So we would have to amend that to include that, which I can work with Crystal on tomorrow.
Okay, I will make the motion to introduce the local law. I need a second. I got a second by Jill. Bruce?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Who am I, Jill?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Wayne Parking Lot, how to proceed. We've brought into a couple of issues with that. And currently Jill is working on trying to work through those issues to see if we can bring that back to the board. So at this point, that's kind of stalled pending a couple of issues that we need to address, including ADA compliance. Number three, the ATVs, it's an enforcement issue. I've spoken to a couple of the residents. Ed's not the only one that brought this up. I've had two other people complain about it. I did speak to New York State Police regarding it with a little bit of hope that hopefully a little bit more enforcement might be something that will take care of this for us. I know Jill, you had said you had had some issues, some complaints from some people.
Yeah, on Saturday, two different folks came up to me at the farmer's market, local people, both from Irish Hill.
And, you know, I, I know people don't want to call the state police and the sheriff's department, but sometimes we get enough complaints, we'll get a little bit more patrol. At least to keep them off the flats.
This is a county-wide problem right now.
Yeah, well, you know, you throw a pandemic in there, keep kids out of school for four months, and then get parents that just want to see their kids finally get outside, and next thing you know, they are.
Yeah.
Their parents aren't watching them, and that's, that's what it comes down to. Number four, the town building reference purchase and installation of office doors as part of the Phase Two. We're going to be changing a couple of the doors here at the Town Hall to better serve the public and allow them to get in past the temporary door that we've got. So we'll be seeing some, some quotes come in. See if we can't get ourselves open up so the public can actually come inside instead of just being in the vestibule. I don't know if the board had any more questions regarding that. Number five in old business is water and sewer. And Dave, if you're in here, we'll try to unmute you in case you have something to say. They've got three, three quotes for the new utility billing software. We've got one from CUSI, which is a $1,200 annual fee and a $5,500 initial cost. Black Mountain has a $1,910 annual fee and an $8,400 total cost. Town would need to do its own data conversion on that one. And BSNA was $21,995. Dave, do you want to give a brief synopsis to the board on?
Sure.
You're looking to go with on this?
Well, we, we sat down, we had online demonstrations and with myself, Kelly and Crystal were involved. And after going through all these, what's best going to serve the town? Or the Water and Sewer Department is the CUSI program. We looked at several different ones. We spent a month, almost a month and a half on this. And this seems to be the best thing to go with. It will integrate with Badger meters, which we have, and it'll save a lot of time and effort and be able to go forward down the future. It's upgradable, where the system that we have now, the UV probe, we cannot upgrade. We're stuck. It was supposed to have been deleted back in 2013. And we've used it for seven years that there was no upgrades. So moving forward, this is going to be the best situation for us, get the best bang for our buck.
I know you don't want to hear this, but did you consult with anybody that's using that system?
Yes. The city of Syracuse is using it. And one of their outside ham, well, it's not really hamlet, it's outside of Syracuse. Their special district is using it, a water and sewer district is using it. And they say it works fine with Badger. They have a few minor hiccups at the beginning because of the Badger system, not the software system.
And what about, did you consult with Candace at all?
No, because Badgers, what CAGNUS needs is from Badgers, not from the utility billing software. And we're staying with Badgers because that's what the 320 meters we have. We're not going to reinvent the wheel.
Right, right. And it gives you a lot more data than we're able to generate right now, this new system?
The new Badger system will. And the billing, so it's two different systems. The billing software will allow Kelly to do a lot more simpler, single billing. Right now, to send out one bill for if there was an error or someone didn't get it, it's a whole process for. Where this can be done in seconds. And down, down in the future, it could go to online payments. It can go on to emailing bills out. There's a lot more we can do with it.
I, I understand all that part. I guess where I'm going with this, Dave, is knowing the future means that we're going to be applying for grants and knowing that those grants are going to require data. I'm just wondering, with, with all the data that they keep asking you for, or us for, whatever, will this make it simpler to generate that data for the future?
Not this program. You got to separate this. This program that we're talking about now is strictly for billing. The program that you've already approved last meeting for the new Badger Trumbull and the new Badger software, that's where all that information comes from.
Okay. As long as we all understand it, that's fine. Thanks, Dave, for all the work.
No problem. Yep.
Any other board questions for Dave? I would make a motion on the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Superintendent to authorize for the purchase of the CUSI billing program at the $1,200 annual fee and a $5,500 initial cost.
I'll second that.
I got a motion by myself, a second by Jane. Jill?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
And I'm an I.
Thank you.
Did I forget? Number six, Veterans Park, Fire Department Safety Accessing Gate. Jane, you just want me to quickly read the letter that you put in? Would that suffice?
Oh, sure. I forgot that. Sure.
Okay. There's a Main Street Riverside Building meeting on June the 6th. President were Art Walker from the Naresburg Fire Department, Steve Gregoretti, the building owner, Ron Santo, Jay Luxinger. The above group meant to discuss the emergency plan the Naresburg Fire Department currently has in place regards to the Main Street Riverside Buildings north of the deck. Property owners were relieved to learn of the existing fire hydrant on Bridge Street located between Tre'amichie and building owned by Steve. A lengthy discussion was had regarding access to the rear of the building. Our thought two small pump trucks were able to fit onto the bridge, but Steve questioned the height of the bridge as it may have changed with the recent bridge construction. Steve felt the additional roadside chain at the entrance of Veterans Park sends a negative message to visitors regardless of the fact that the chain was added to assure a path under the bridge to the rear of the buildings in case of an emergency. Possible solution for that would be to pave a roadway from Main Street to under the bridge and clearly mark it as a fire lane, designating as many parking spaces as possible to remaining spaces while still maintaining emergency vehicle passage under the bridge. As an action plan, the Fire Department will measure the opening under the bridge to determine if the passage of the pump truck is still possible. The Fire Department will do a mock turnaround with the appropriate vehicle to determine how much space is needed to complete the turn. Town responsibility is, if available, remaining space may be delineated as parking spaces. The chain may be moved to under the bridge, allowing visitors to access newly created parking and investigate the possibility to pave an official fire lane. The border of the adjacent property owner will be reviewed to see if parking may be added on that border. And Jane will share the meeting notes with Town Board members, which she has done. Additional information was with Steve. It recently had a large propane tank buried underground which eliminated numerous tanks above ground. Gas used by tenants will be metered and billed directly. He informed us that construction was completed by Modern Gas Company in Pennsylvania, no cost to him. And it may be a model for other Main Street building owners to may consider thereby removing above ground propane tanks.
It was a good meeting.
That sounds like it was a good meeting. Number seven.
Let me just discuss who's going to fire, follow up on, on that.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you for doing that.
Keep going.
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Jane.
No, you're also welcome. No, you're also welcome.
Uh, Star's, Star Hesse's letter, uh, reference to the violation request. I've spoken with the attorney. I'm going to speak with Danielle again and I don't see a change in what the town has done, but, uh, I will be in contact with Star after the conversation. I don't have a lot to report on that right now, so if we need to, I know, Danielle has talked about, uh, maybe possibly we'll do a Zoom with Star. That might be, uh, originally we were going to have a sit down meeting before the COVID took over. I think it might be better that way than a letter just to, uh, if you're available.
I'll make myself available.
Yeah, we'll find a time. I think just a, a conversation will be better than a letter. I think Star might agree to that. Number eight is the bid received, reference to the town hall. We did receive, uh, one bid. The bid went out. There was a walk around prior to the bids being received, so the people knew what they had. Only one bid came back in, it's Reeves Mountain Construction. The additional items are added onto it, so the, the cost for the main roof is $185,810. Uh, there's three additional items that may be added at the request of the town board. Uh, the first is half inch CDX plywood over existing roofboards, nailed into existing rafters with a 2.5 inch ring chain. That came in at $11,428. Item number two was reference to the town hall kitchen, uh, removal of the low slope roof and in brand, uh, install Carlisle brand EODM roofing over one inch manufacturer proved insulation with kitchen awning, cut, install new flashing. That came in at $33,419. Uh, item number three is a price per square foot to repair, replaced any damaged roof decking. That came in at $33 per square foot. So item number one and item number two are in addition to the main part of the roof being done, $185,810. Does any of the board member have questions regarding this?
Yes. Oh, item number one and two, are you asking just for question?
No, just any questions about the, the main roof or item number one and two.
I, I have a question about item number three, so I can wait.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll, I'll add number three and one and two.
Item number three was over the kitchen, right?
No, that, that price per square foot was if they're, uh, if they're stripping the main roof and it needed additional, um, sheathing to replace any of the decking that's there. Because we're not replacing the whole decking, only the damaged area.
Thinking is if it's, if the kitchen roof is a separate portion, let's hold off on it until we know what we're doing.
I would agree with that.
And that was a 30 something thousand dollar price. You'd have to bid that out separately anyway.
I think we should do it all and be done with it in one shot.
Well, the problem is, that was Bruce?
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the reason that I'm suggesting to hold off on that is because there was talk of building out on, uh, the theater on top of the roof over the kitchen, possibly.
Don't agree with that. Sorry.
I never heard anything about that.
No, that was just something that we had talked about when we were looking for space. My question with that is going to be the original grant money and the original amount that we came into, well, in the past, when it was put in for, was it $120,000 was the estimate that was given. So we've got a $75,000 grant that we can use towards this. We would have to come up with the other $160,000 if we keep item number two in there. At 185,000, we're still going to have to come up with about 110,000.
Just my feeling, if we're going to do it, do it in one shot and be done with it. Don't screw around with, you know, half the hair and half there.
Yeah, if you do things like that, well, it ends up costing more in the long run if you don't do it correctly the first time.
Well, I don't think it's that it's being done incorrectly. I think the roof is very important, but the, if you look at the kitchen, it's a very small portion. And if it's already, um, portioned out price wise, it's, it's simple to wait a little bit and then if we need it, just go back to it.
Was the kitchen included in the original bid? Cause that's important.
It was put in as the original bid. And the reason that we put it in is separate like that in case it became too much money.
Oh, okay.
Be able to say we, we can do the main portion. Because we were worried that the price is going to come in. Town of Kushekton put a town hall up for that, that amount of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot.
The roof abs, the, the roof absolutely has to be done. There's no doubt about it because of the amount of time that it's taken to get to this point to do this. We've incurred other damage to the building, but we haven't incurred other damage to the back part of the building. And I think that's something that we, I, I feel we, I think we could get it cheaper in the long run. I, I honestly do. 185 is just a, a big number to hit right off the bat. I don't know. It's, it's up to the board. I mean, we feel kind of split here. Randy?
And we put it out.
I agree with you then.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just wondering, why didn't we get more than one bid? Is it because it's roofing season and they're just too busy to even bid?
Um, I believe there was four or five companies that actually came out to the, the mandatory walk around that needed to be done. We did receive one phone call, I believe on Monday from one company that didn't, and it's a roofing company that they didn't realize had to be in on a certain date and they wanted to fax or email their bid in so that, you know. I don't know. It's, uh, I, I, I think mostly because it's prevailing wage and, um, they put together a good, a good package as far as protecting the town on what they knew was going to be there.
It is pricey, but I don't know anything about the cost of putting a roof on, so.
And without, without other bids, it's hard to compare.
Can we call, they hate to hold off on this again. Can you?
I'm sorry?
If, if it's, if it's taken this long to get to this point, it's hard that, you know, it's a thought, you want to hold off. You want to be able to get more bids, but if, if they're not coming in.
No, I wouldn't rebid this. Um, we'll end up losing, that's part of the problem too. We'll end up losing the grant. And then even if we got a lower bid, then we're going to be responsible for the whole thing. At least we've got the guarantee of some sort of money.
And we have an endpoint for that grant too, right?
Yeah, this, and this will be completed by September 1st.
Okay.
Possibly sooner if we don't have number two in there. Danielle, this, the way that this bid was written up, that these additional items may be added at the request of the town board. Uh, item number two was the one, uh, for the CDX plywood, $11,428. Item number two was the other roof at 33,419. Is that something that we can, can we award the bid tonight for the main roof? And then if we find that we've got the availability of the money, so we can add either of those two items by a second vote?
You can, as long as everyone, as long as this project, um, everyone who wanted to, uh, put a bid in had the same opportunity, right? That was sent out to everyone in the specs, right?
Correct, yes. Bruce, does that work for you?
Yeah, I, I think that'll work out.
Okay. Um, number nine, uh, I would make a motion to accept the bid from Reeves Mountain Construction for the main roof for a total cost of $185,810. And additional items that may be added at the request of the board remain open pending approval by the town board for those items, with the exception of number three, which will be approved, uh, at $33 per square foot. Danielle, that sounded about right?
That's right.
I'll second.
I got Jane for a second. Randy?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
And I'm an aye.
Who else did I miss?
Danielle, last time I tried to not do it, but she said I have to.
Thank you. Horse, uh, as Brady had stated in her report, mid-September is when it's supposed to come in. Uh, we have met to put together, uh, some specifications for the building pad, uh, location. What we're looking for is to authorize that that, that we put together an RFP so that I can go out to bid. At this point in time, I'd like to discuss with the board, one thing we do not have is an engineer for the town. And we're getting into some of these projects that really should have had an engineer for the town to assist us with. Uh, Jim and Jim and Crystal have done a really good job with, uh, the help of a couple of local contractors that have worked, with them to put together some of these RFPs like for the roof. But, uh, even like with this horse and speaking with Jim, we've got specifications that are coming in for it. Were great specifications, but they're not New York code. But we need to speak with somebody that can quickly tell us what we need to do in order to get this put out. So I, the long way I'm going around this is make a I would make a motion that we be able to, uh, put out a request for, actually a bid, we'll put a, a bid together based on the specifications for this, but I would like to, for the next meeting, have the board prepared to look over a couple of names that I bring forward as far as an engineer for the town so that we can, uh, we can get a little assistance in doing some of these. Some of these things are just a little bit, uh, more than we should be doing as laypeople. So I would make a motion to put out to bid the specifications that are yet to be determined for the, uh, pad and pavilion for the horse.
And electrical.
The only, the only problem with this is I don't know that we're going to have this in time to get the specs out and get them back in time for the July meeting. I don't know if we want to move this to the July meeting so that we can have it by the August meeting and with a completion date of September 1st. Randy, you still got your
Oh, boy.
Your setup ready before it gets there. I just don't want to do it wrong.
Yeah, no, I don't either, but, um, I know today, uh, Crystal called and wanted to know if, um, she and Jim could have the contact information for the people in Hudson, New York who have a horse and think he could pick their brain about some of the specifications for New York State because we, you know, we were given by the manufacturer in Washington State. And, uh, I'm giving that to them tomorrow. Um, so maybe we, could we recess the meeting somewhere soon? If the specs start coming together, I mean, before we got an engineer?
We could do that. That would give me a week or two to see if I can engage an engineer.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Any of the board have an issue with that at all?
Well, that sounds good. That sounds the right thing to do.
It would be a better way to go, that's for sure.
Coincidentally, I contacted the city of Hudson today to try to get some information about, uh, from their attorney's office, which they haven't gotten back to me yet, but it was just today, um, regarding some issues. If I get in touch with them quickly, um, I'll ask some of the questions.
Scott Porter knows the, um, you know, the whole family went, the Porters went to Hudson, New York to see the horse in operation. And he knows the guy who operates it and who had it installed and everything. So that'll be a great contact for Jim.
Okay, good.
Yeah. I'll get that some more to him.
Jane, number 11 on old business, Little Lake Erie Culvert Project. Do we have a start date of that yet or no?
I, I'm not aware. No.
Okay. That was just a question on your old business. Uh, new business, before we get into, uh, phase two, we need to make a motion to accept the donation from Janet Bergen. So I would make a motion that we accept the $175 from Janet Bergen. Need a second on that?
Second.
No, a second by Jill. Randy?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Bruce?
Yeah, aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Uh, phase two, uh, approving the expansion about the areas of restaurant bars for reopen. A resolution approving the expansion of outdoor areas of restaurants bars for reopening. Whereas pursuant to the governor's order effective Thursday, June 4th, 2020, Allstate Liquor Authority here in ASLA licensees in regions that have entered phase two of reopening and which have on premise service privileges under the Alcohol Beverage Control Law. Hereafter A, B, C law may resume outdoor on premise service of alcohol beverages and/or food subject to the guidance of the SLA. And whereas pursuant to the SLA guidance, however, a licensee may, for the duration that the guidance remains in effect, use any contiguous outdoor open air part of its existing premise for which it has control by deed, lease, management agreement or other agreement of control. And whereas the licensees, existing license operates with stipulations restricting the use of outdoor areas through a municipality or other entity, such licensee may submit a letter from such stipulating municipality or other entity approving such additional outdoor use of premises. And whereas any licensee that expands its premise pursuant to the immediately foregoing paragraph is required to submit an updated diagram to the SLA within five days of doing so. Now therefore be resolved at the town board of the town of Tustin, by this resolution approves of the expansion of any contiguous outdoor open air part of a bar or restaurant existing premise for which it is controlled by deed, lease, management agreement or other agreement of control subject to the SLA guidance and all other applicable New York State laws, rules, regulations and executive orders. And number two, that the town board of the town of Tustin hereby authorizes the town clerk to promptly issue any requested letters stipulating approval such expanded outdoor use of premises or of bars and restaurants promptly upon request. I would make the motion in a second. I'll narrow off the discussion on, anybody have any questions on that?
How it all makes sense. I'll second it.
I would, I got a motion by myself, a second by Jill. Randy?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Bruce?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
I think number three, we're going to do the same thing, uh, for our bids or quotes of the painting of the face of the town hall. We're going to move that into the recessed meeting. And number four, go out to bid for ADA compliance sidewalk sections. That one also, I'm going to move that into the recessed meeting because that, we absolutely should have an engineer for. And that's going to be the sidewalk that's down in front of the Tustin Cup. There's a cut in the sidewalk for, uh, it lowers down into the roadway. But on the other end of the, uh, at the other end of the walkway where it meets the curbing, it's still a regular curbing, so that has to be cut down. So that's going to have to be cut down to an engineer spec for an ADA.
Is that not something highway can do?
I don't believe that Don wants to do that because of this, of the specifications for it. That's going to actually be a pretty involved job because where, where it meets at the other end of the walkway is actually in a curve in the, in the sidewalk. Yeah, it's, it's. Actually Danielle, as far as an ADA. Actually Danielle, as far as an ADA complaining sidewalk, that, the concrete people should be aware of what that would be, no?
I would think so.
Okay, so then I would make a motion to authorize the highway superintendent to uh, put together a uh, bid or quote, whichever he feels he's required um, to come into ADA compliance for the crosswalk on Main and Bridge Street. And then we will authorize, if he goes at the bid, we would authorize the town clerk to put it out to bid to be opened the Friday before our next meeting. July tenth. That way he can get that going. Um, I do know that in my talks with the highway superintendent, that New York State was considering withholding certain funding because of that was not done yet, so. If he's got any issues with that, he can always hold off on it until we get an engineer if he thinks he needs that for it. I would make the motion to authorize that, a second?
Second.
Second by Jill, Brandy?
Hi.
I'm an I, Bruce?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Um, and under new business, I did speak to Lang Enviro Ventures. Um, I called up to uh, start getting some quotes as far as putting a uh, porta potty down on the flats at the ball field in the park. Um, and he just requested a letter and he was willing to donate the services of that throughout the summer. So that should be taken care of, we'll contact them with the letter tomorrow and uh, get that taken care of on Ed's, Ed's request of that. I don't believe, does anybody have any other new business before the board?
I think if uh, Lang Engineering is going to donate the porta potty services, you need a motion to accept that. It's a donation.
Yeah, I make a motion, I accept it.
Jill makes a motion to accept the use of a Lang Enviro Ventures porta potty uh, at the playground in the flats. I will second that, Brandy?
I'll stay.
Uh, I'm an I, Bruce?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
And Jane?
Hi.
Is there any other new business? Okay, we'll move into public comment.
Maybe, 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 maybe.
Okay.
There's an issue about the stone under the bridge, the um, there's bluestone, it's got to be spread. And I I think that should be highway doing that and it's still there. Um, how do we get highway to move on that, Ben?
I guess I'll give him a call and ask him what he's going with it.
Well, I think he's been called several times, so maybe it's your turn.
This is in retaliation to you doing the follow up under there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bruce is much different than what I have to do.
I have some new old.
It's stone dust, not stone, by the way.
What is it?
It's just stone dust, so it just needs to be spread or moved.
Okay, I can give Don a call on that.
I have some new old business because nothing still has happened with the parking lot by the town hall, the library about getting the the lines painted.
I know that we have contacted the county, but uh, they're still at reduced manpower, so.
I thought we were getting someone in Honesdale who said that they would do it for a nominal fee. That's that's what Don wanted to do, it's been almost a year.
Yeah, I, that I'm not aware of, but I am aware of, Don had called the county and I had talked with the county because they had actually come out to take a look at the parking lot. Um, they were here, I think about three weeks ago, so I can follow up and see if they've got a start date for us.
Please, thank you.
Okay. If there's no other new and old business, we will move into public comment.
I have a question.
Okay, Irish.
With this port of sand that is going to be donated, I would suggest that it would be um, ADA compliant so that if it's only one, that we do not eliminate anybody from the ability to use it.
Good point, Iris.
If he is being generous to do that, rather than trying to get a second one in that's ADA, this would be one that everybody could use.
I can certainly request that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Star?
Yes. Yep, um, I just want to let everybody know, we, I I don't know if you've gotten your um, election notification for the primary on the twenty third, but according to the latest missive from the Board of Elections, there will not be a polling place in Tustin. The only one that you can go to and actually vote in will be at the Highland Town Hall in Eldred. The hours will be the same, but that's the only one right now that's going to be open for actual walk-in voting. So please make your plans accordingly. And if you know anybody that needs a ride that would normally walk to Tustin and now is going to have to schlep down to Eldred, um, maybe we can arrange some kind of transportation for people on a bulk basis to get them where they can get to vote.
We can do that, thank you. Ed, did you have something else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Um, recess date. Two weeks would be the twenty third, is that?
That's fine, as far as I know.
Brandy?
Fine with me.
Jane?
Fine with me.
Bruce?
Sure.
What time?
Uh, six thirty.
Okay.
What's that? Okay, so I would make a motion to recess until six thirty on June the twenty third, and that will also be on Zoom.
If you need me, I'm available, by the way.
What's that, Danielle?
If you need me, I'm available, but if you don't need me, I don't need to come either.
It's no fun without you.
Oh.
Um, a second?
Second.
I got a second from Jill, Brandy?
Hi.
I'm an I, Jane?
Hi.
Jill?
Yeah.
Brucey?
Hi.
Thank you for attending.
Is there board comments or not?
You know, I I just realized, I am sorry. I'm going to put my my meeting back on. Send my.
Sorry about that.
I have a comment, please. Um, I have gotten a couple of calls from folks who were coaches and repair folks at the Repair Cafe that they're they're sad that it's, you know, we can't have it. So um, a a number of them have offered to continue to do to do things, so I'm going to be putting something out um, where particular information, I'll post it on our on our um, uh, you know, social media and so on, and I'll let Crystal know it could be on the website that that, you know, the different people that want, will be, are willing to do different things. Folks can drop it off at my house, I'll make arrangements to have them email me what they have and make sure it can be done. But um, folks don't, are sad that it's not available, and so we're going to make some of it work uh, just a little bit different way, you know, working outside the box.
That sounds good, Brandy?
Um, just want to encourage people to go to a Veterans Memorial Park and and look at the um, the new nine eleven monument. It's a, it was Ed, Ed Jackson's idea to have this done and we finally realized it for him. And um, I just thought it's a special thing, it is for me, so inviting people to go down there and check it out.
Jane?
Yeah, I do have a comment. Um, uh, my comment is, it was so much fun to show off our town to someone who really doesn't know it and watch the ooze and oz all day long. And we should all be very happy and proud that we live here.
Thanks for doing that, Jane. Um, Brucey?
No comment.
Um, the only one comment I would, I would like to put out there is um, for those in the audience that know Ed Jackson, uh, did have a surgery yesterday and I spoke to him last night, he came out of it very well, so. He uh, wanted to let that be known and he expects to be at his regular meeting uh, which is on the fifteenth, correct? With that, um, I would again make a motion to recess until six thirty on June the twenty third via Zoom. Second?
Second.
Brandy, Jill?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Brandy?
Hi.
I'm an I, Bruce?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.